Vermillion City Council meeting scheduled for Monday, February 3rd, 2025 have come to order. Katie, would please call roll.
Tolliver.
Here.
Lieber.
Here.
Price.
Here.
Holland.
Here.
Genoine.
Here.
Helwig.
Here.
Cheeseman.
Here.
Murrah.
Here.
Mayor Cole.
Here. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the January 21st, 2025 special meeting and the January 21st, 2025 regular meeting? If so, are there any changes to the minutes or a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilor Tolliver is our second.
Second.
Second by Councilor Genoine. Any discussion on the minutes? All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Minutes are approved. Adoption of the agenda. Has everyone had a chance to review the agenda? If so, are there any changes to the agenda or is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Councilor Cheeseman. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Holland. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Agenda is adopted. Visitors to be heard. For visitors to be heard on persons addressed in the council, they shall use the microphone at the podium. Please raise your hand to be recognized and go to the podium and state your name and address for the record. For items not on the agenda, members of the public may speak under visitors to be heard. And remarks are limited to five minutes, but no decision will be made at this time. On agenda items, public testimony will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been announced by the mayor and explained by staff. Any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item, and public testimony will then be closed and topic given to the governing body for possible action. City council members and staff may discuss the current agenda item unless a council member moves to allow another person to speak and there's unanimous consent from the council. Questions from the council, however, may be directed to a staff member or a public through the presiding officer at any time. At this moment, are there any visitors to be heard for items not on the agenda? Seeing none, moving on to the next item. We have no public hearing, so we'll have old business. We have second reading of ordinance 1528 in reference to rezoning from R3 to General Business District in the area of the Jack Powell Edition. Jose?
Thank you. So the Vermillion Area Chamber and Development Company, they're the owners of the land, have requested that the city rezone lots one and two, which would be here, of Block One of the Jack Powell Edition. This area is located in the southwest corner of Highway 50 and Stanford Street or Highway 19. This area, their request is to rezone this from the R3 District to the General Business District. This zoning these two lots into the General Business District would provide additional commercial parcels available for the community and at a very prominent corner of the community. The city council did consider this item at their January 21st meeting. At that meeting, after a discussion, the council voted unanimously to advance the ordinance to the second reading, which is today. The staff and the city's planning commission recommend that the previously described property be rezoned from the R3 Residential District to the GB General Business District. This being the second reading, a roll call vote is required.
Thank you, Jose. Are there any visitors to be heard on this topic? Seeing none, move to council for discussion. Any discussion by council? Motion to approve by Councilor Murrah is the second by Councilor Helwig. Councilor Lieber, you had?
Okay.
Any other discussion? Okay, we'll go to the machine for the vote. There are nine yays, zero nays. Motion carries. Thank you. That concludes old business. Moving on to new business. First one up is the to approve the construction agreement with Mammoth Sports in reference to the Cotton Park pickleball and tennis court construction.
Can I raise my hand if I could?
Hold on one second. We're going to have the city staff explain first.
All right.
Go ahead, Jim.
Good evening, members of the council. Mr. Dominguez is putting up a rendering of what the complex would look like or could look like. That is not a final design, but a general idea how it fits within that park space down there. The memo that you received on last week was a lengthy memo. I think this is a very complex project, and so I'm going to try and be brief, recapping the memo. But in 2023, the construction began on the new Vermillion Elementary School in Barstow Park. For that construction, it was necessary to remove the pickleball tennis courts in that area. The Vermillion School District did allow the use of their public tennis courts behind the high school. They also allowed us to paint pickleball lines on those. In the summer, the court space was challenged by the overlapping demands of the city-run tennis program and the heavy public usage. When school became in session, public playtimes were conceded to the physical education classes and the Vermillion tennis team. We at the city and the Parks and Recreation knew that the elementary school at the Barstow site would be coming, and to recognize and prepare for that, we put funds in the capital improvement plan, which is presented to you every March. In 2024, staff began seeking information from other communities with existing pickleball courts and tennis facilities, different contractors that they used, and estimated construction costs. A formal presentation about the racket sports complex in Vermillion was held on July 1st of 2024 at a noon meeting. The presentation included what the game of pickleball is, player demographics, and its popularity in Vermillion. Also included was a comparison of number of courts that Vermillion had versus other Class A communities in the state. Council had discussion and was directed staff to explore a four-pickleball, two-tennis-court version and a six-pickleball, two-tennis-court version. In addition, staff was also given the directive to more closely explore contractors, funding sources, and grant opportunities. At the July 15th noon council meeting, the racket complex was not on the agenda. However, under the visitors-to-be-heard portion of the agenda, public comments were given to the council concerning the possible noise pollution associated with the game of pickleball. A brief discussion between council members followed, but no council action was taken at that time. September 3rd, the noon city council, there was a presentation again. It was a recap of the first meeting because we had the election in July, and so we kind of reevaluated, or excuse me, in June with the new council members in July, so gave them a recap of that and information on the new meeting. The presentation included the recommendation from staff as a cotton park being the site of the proposed complex. The reason cited was the property is owned by the city, it had the existing infrastructure in place, and was already used as an athletic facility for the past two decades. Prior to this meeting, staff sought possible contractors for the complex after given direction by council at the previous meeting. Mammoth Built Construction with an office in Sioux Falls was chosen to at least help us to investigate and get costs and ideas for this project. For the presentation, Mammoth provided two different court renderings, one of which you've seen on the screen here, with estimated costs and how it would fit in the park site. At the meeting, the council also received numerous public comments concerning alternate site locations, noise pollution concerns, and the lessening of the natural environment of Cotton Park with the complex down there. The need for separate pickleball and tennis courts were brought up and how popular pickleball is in the Vermillion community. Also brought up was the limited amount of public court space and having to share it with Parks and Recreation Program as well as school usage. Staff addressed questions from the council concerning why the Cotton Park location. Again, staff highlighted the challenges of operating a facility on property that is not owned by the city, the site is build-ready, and the low number of residential homes in that area that could be if there was a noise concern adjacent to the park. Staff also addressed options to mitigate any noise concerns, including environmental measures, noise-reducing wrap or windscreen around the courts, and not installing lights at the facility, limiting play after dark. After the discussion, staff was given approval from council to have soil investigations done at the Cotton Park site. At December 2nd noon council meeting, a follow-up presentation was given recapping the previous two council meetings, sharing the results of the soil investigation done by Geotech. The soil investigation found that the site would need mitigation as part of the construction. A portion of that report was also included in the council packet given on Friday. I believe there's about 20 pages in there for good reading for you guys to get after there. Mammoth received the soil investigation reports as well and explored three mitigation options. The options selected combined the lowest cost estimate with a suitable construction outcome. From the other, from the three options that were given, the option chosen was $146,000 less than the other two options. The updated cost of the two tennis court, six pickleball court complex with findings from the soil investigation was projected to be $1.25 million. I think to note here, with the significant public input shown at the public meetings and comments received during this duration, on December 18th, I sent a letter to 18 households adjacent to the Cotton Park site, basically to ensure public transparency. This letter outlined public enhancements that already have taken place at the park and the planned addition of new tennis and pickleball courts. Financial considerations, here's where it gets a little tricky, so bear with me. The contract price at Mammoth came in with was $1.175 million. This includes the site engineering, the site design, construction, and construction administration. Basically a design-build. Funds for the project will come in a variety of ways. Grants and donations, $29,400. Re-allocation of the city's Second Penny Pledge from the Vermillion Now Three Campaign of $50,000. And then the city had funds budgeted in 2024 for $720,000 of Second Penny funding, which did not get used last year because the facility wasn't built. The budget also had $175,000 of money to be used on the Vermillion Bike Path. However, with the floods last year and the council's decision not to fund that project, that money is still out there and would be used for this project. So with the carryover of the 2024 funds, the VCDC funds and grants, $974,000 is the total amount that's available. So approximately $150,600 of additional funding would be needed for this project if approved. If approved, it'll be need, the 2025 budget will need to be amended to account for this line item expenditure. To wrap it up here, Mammoth Construction is a member of the Equalist Group. The reason why that is important, that provides contracts competitively solicited by public agencies. So for you guys, you're familiar with it's a source well, but for construction projects, so you don't have to go out for bids and all of those. It's already a predetermined price and approved by the Equalist Organization, which the city of Vermillion is part of. In addition, Mammoth has secured, has assured city officials that subcontract work, the purchase of site building materials, would be offered to local contractors and vendors. Although there is no specific documentation on the number of requests for pickleball courts or the replacement of the courts that we keep over at the Park and Rec Office, but the demand is evidenced. The Armory has needed to add an indoor, daily indoor pickleball playtime. A local church recently this summer has painted pickleball courts in their parking lot. The USD Wellness Center has opened public playtimes, as well as the USD Intermural Pickleball League has 67 doubles teams that make up their league. The new complex would provide the community with a low-cost recreational activity for persons of all ages without the need for a membership fee. Mammoth has shared that if a contract was secured, construction would start this spring when weather allows and has a projected 120-day construction timeline. With all this being said, staff recommends the signing of a contract with Mammoth Built for the design-build of the Vermillion Racket Complex. Questions?
Thank you, Jim. Before we take public visits to be heard, we do, we're making an exception here just given the circumstances for a Zoom input. So we're going to allow them to do the Zoom first. We'll get any technology issues worked out first before we get everybody inside. So if you want to go ahead and just please state your name and location for the record.
Yes. Barbara Yelverton. I'm in Tubac, Arizona, but in Vermillion, I live at 205 Lewis Street, which is on the bluff above Cotton Park. I think, can you first, can you hear me?
We can't. It's a little bit broken up. Hold on one second.
Okay.
Can you just give the microphone a quick test if you could?
Here's the microphone. Yeah.
Can everybody else hear them okay?
Can you hear me now better?
Okay. You can go ahead and go, Barb.
Okay. So if you heard, we're in Tubac, Arizona right now, but we live at, I live at 205 Lewis Street, which is right basically above Cotton Park. And, you know, as you guys know, I, we feel that location is not the place because we're going to lose the only nature greenscape we have. But, looks like that ship has sailed. So the biggest concern then is the noise pollution. And we have visited with two mayors in the Atlanta suburbs, the Park and Rec Rector of Eisenhower Park in Denver, and a neighbor, a neighborhood person lives in Encinitas, California, where they plop some of these courts down, and those courts now have been, they've been stopped right now because of the noise pollution. So, and I read the memo you put out, Jam, about noise mitigation. Well, first of all, bushes and trees are going to take a long time to grow. And secondly, as far as those of us who live on the bluff, that's not going to take care of that noise mitigation. So the next best thing that we've researched and talked to these people in these other cities that are having noise problems is the use of foam balls. And we actually talked, I think we sent all of you a video of those Gamma, they're called Gamma Librarian Balls. And we actually talked to the maker of them, and the dynamics of the game really doesn't change that much. I mean, maybe if you're looking for world championship, gamemanship. But it reduces noise levels by approximately 50%. So I mean, I think if we want to be respectful of the neighbors that are going to be affected, not just the adjacent ones, but those that live up on the bluff, I think that should be a consideration. And if it's considered, it really needs to be a requirement. It needs to be, when those courts open, foam balls, the city could either, you know, provide them for them. We could figure something out and people could access them. And that foam ball should be a requirement. So thank you. And I think maybe my significant other would like to say something. Thank you.
Is it okay if I go now? Here?
Yes, you can go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Charles Yelverton. I live on in Vermillion, above the bluff, or on the bluff above the park. And I also recommend that this project not be approved as it is now because the site is a mistake. It's, I realize you restricted yourselves to city-owned property, but I think that was not in the best interest of the city because there's so many other sites that are more appropriate for a noisy environment of pickleball. And it's all over the nation, there's problems with the noise effect, and it's not so much the decibel of the noise that comes out of six courts being played simultaneously. It's going to affect our neighborhood, Forest and Lewis section, and also south on Court Street above, above the Cotton Park. And the sound mitigation efforts that are described in the memo to the city councils are not going to address sound that rises. So I think it'd be in the best interest to go back to the drawing board and find a site that's already noisy. Because we're going to, we're going to lose our only natural park the city has. And I think it's unfortunate because it's not going to be a place where you want to walk and, you know, listen to birds and have quiet time. There won't be any more of that. It's going to, it's, Cotton Park is not a recreational park. But the one, the thing I want, if it does go through, I want to talk about the foam balls that are now introduced. They're approved by the USA Pickleball Association. They're called Gamma Librarian Balls. Gamma is the company that makes them. They're located on the Allegheny River in Pittsburgh. And I talked to them personally, and there's at least two cities now that are requiring these balls for play on the courts. And the noise reduction is significant, at least 50%. And so I think at minimum, that sound mitigation should be applied to Cotton Park. And it'd be a great effort by the city to just supply the balls so that they know that that's the ball being used. The ball is, is almost exactly the same weight as a normal Franklin 40 pickleball. It has the same aerodynamics, the same bounce, the same quality of play. And it'd be perfect to reduce the noise. And I truly believe there's going to be noise nuisance complaints after this project is done, just by the volume of courts that you would have. And I think it's, and I also talked to an audiology professor at USD about the noise from the pickleball. It's not so much the decibel. It's the staccato constant ping and pang back and forth. You don't have a chance to recover neurologically from this, and it's a continuous noise. And when the pickleball game is over, the people playing pickleball can go back to their homes and not have to hear it anymore. Whereas those of us who are subjected to it in our homes, we're going to have it 12 hours a day. It's going to drive people crazy. And I don't think there's been enough evaluation of this site to warrant that. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yelverton. Thank you, Dan. Are there any other visitors to be heard present that would like to speak?
First, I'd say that I thought Charles Yelverton was very articulate. And my name is Kathy Beard, and I'm a citizen. I live in Vermillion. And these are my remarks on February 3rd. And you have this project that you're thinking about. And I say, the question to ask for any new project that spends taxpayer money is, who benefits from this? Are lives improved? How many lives as a percentage of the population of Vermillion? If you build pickleball courts down by Cotton Park, what is the percentage of Vermillion citizens who benefit from the expenditure? Do the numbers justify a million-plus dollars? Parks exist for more than recreation. They are also for those seeking repose and quiet. It is harder and harder to find quiet places. Those acres by the Vermillion River seem prime for the planting of shade trees and picnic tables. This would plan for a future that is growing hotter. Paving green spaces increases the heat. Those who play pickleball do not seem concerned by the repetitive noise of the ball, but it is noisy and distracting. There are pickleballs that mitigate the noise. I think that is worth considering, but the use of them depends on the players, who monitors them. As a taxpayer, I believe the Parks Department can spend their money elsewhere and more wisely. Thank you for listening to me. And I have a copy of this.
Thank you. Are there other visitors to be heard?
My name is Greg Merrigan. My wife and I live at 1414 Crestview Drive. As you've heard, pickleball is a growing sport across the country and certainly in our community. And I think Cotton Park is a great place for it. It was a recreation facility for 30 years as a soccer field. All the high school matches were played there, large crowds, lots of noise. It seemed to coexist pretty good. I did a little measuring on my computer today, and the current pickleball courts at the high school are 470 feet from Catalina Street. Those tennis courts have been there since about 1970, and the pickleball courts used as pickleball for a couple of years now. And as far as I know, they've coexisted pretty well with the residents on Catalina. The new site is 200 feet from Broadway. There's a home directly to the east, which is 600 feet away, and the homes up in the bluff are 935 feet away. That's double the distance at Catalina. So I think they've coexisted pretty well with the residents on Catalina. And to go double that amount up on the bluff, I just don't think we're going to see the problems. We've had a couple of projects in this community where people on the bluff were concerned about noise. One was the Chestnut Street reconstruction. That was very controversial. And the other was the Crawford Hill reconstruction, and that was very controversial. Those projects have been in place for many, many years now. I live right near Crawford Hill, and we never hear any complaints in those areas at all. So I do respect the people that do have a concern, but I think the impacts are going to be less than anticipated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Merrigan. Are there any other visitors to be heard on this?
My name is Tom Cooper. I live on Forest Avenue. And I just have a couple of questions. I haven't been following this with any precision. And I'm somewhat hard of hearing, so I didn't put a staff member said over here today. But just one thing. If these quieter balls, which Dr. Yelverton referred to, would it not be reasonable for the people who are behind this proposal to buy some of these balls and get a comparison of them to get their feeling about the relative noise of these balls compared to the normal hard ones? I think if they did that, they might have an opinion, yeah, these balls are all right. In fact, they're better than the hard ones. And that would be, there would be no issue regarding noise. Now, I don't have any prediction on the noise impact, how that will come out, but these quiet balls, I think it would be fair to ask them to test them out and see how they compare. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Are there any other visitors to be heard on this?
Good evening. I'm Mary Jo Olson, and I'm just with this whole great big group of pickleball players. And probably for every one, there's four out there that couldn't come. And quite a few of them are playing intramural tonight. And I should have been, but I didn't do well on the ski slope, so sprained my ankle. It wasn't pickleball. I just want people to know, this is a great sport. Everybody has been very kind to me. I just started playing in April. And, you know, we just have so much fun, and we are very supportive of each other. And we can sure try playing with the softballs. I have no problem with that. But this is very good for people to get out and get fresh air. And I don't really believe that, and I shouldn't say that, but I don't know that we're going to scare all the birds off. You know, they get used to us. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Shannon Tobin, and I am fairly new in the community. And I'm also new to the pickleball arena. I do play tennis, and so I crossed the line and gone to pickleball, and I'm having a great time. But I wanted to point out that pickleball does not get played outdoors year-round here. We have winter that hits, you know, roughly November. And pickleball players, we're not going to be out there, you know, when it's, for one, we're not going to be out there if there's no lights because the lights are going to come in a second phase, that I understand. But our season will probably go from, let's say, March, weather permitting, you know, to October, November. So there's going to be some quiet time in the winter hours. Now, as far as taking away walking paths, currently, from my recollection, going down to Cotton Park, the walking paths are more on the interior towards the river area, and it kind of wraps around to the dog park and then at the end of Broadway. And forgive me if I'm off on some detail because I'm getting to know the area. pretty well, but there's still some things I'm foggy about. So as far as the noise concern, I really don't think it's going to be a, a big deficit to the recreation community in this town. Not to mention that, um, Vermillion has a grow campaign, Grow Vermillion campaign. And if you, if this could be part of the plan, you're going to see families partaking and seeing this, um, upgrade in the community parks. And that draws families into a town. It really does. And I think the resources right now, they're still a little limited in the recreation arena. And this would help bring tournaments in, it could bring youth pickleball in, we could, you know, just like the soccer, there could be a youth pickleball league. So I'd like to see it happen. I think it would be a great asset to this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tobin. Is there any other visitors to be heard?
Thank you. I'm Jim Peterson from the Chamber and Development Company, two East Main Street. A couple of comments for some folks that couldn't be here tonight. One, Jay and Mary Lee Hennis aren't able to attend. They wanted me to read a brief statement on their behalf. The number of people playing pickleball is increasing rapidly. The lessons being offered to the new players at the Wellness Center has been very successful. This is definitely a need for this facility in Vermillion. And then Jay, Jay goes on to say, I can't validate it. We started working on this fifteen years ago. Now is the time to say yes to the six new pickleball courts and two tennis courts. Next statement is from Dave Hertz. I think many know it, maybe in your number, Jim, that you had. They wanted me to announce night Midwest Ready Mix and Ace Rental. Annual fundraiser goes to a family need or good cause. Um, this year, they chose the, through Missouri Valley Growth, the nonprofit arm of the chamber to give it to the city for the six pickleball courts, two tennis courts. So Dave and Amy wanted me to say their contribution was ninety-four hundred dollars that they raised to go to this, and they heard a lot of, from a lot of citizens in the community that wanted this park made. So lastly, I'm here on behalf of the VCDC Board. We discussed this at our last meeting last week, and it does fit a pillar, both the Vermillion Now Three campaign and the Grow Capital campaign, which is anomalies, recreation, things to do in our community, and we are limited in some rec, things to do in our community. So after we had a long discussion on this at our board meeting, the VCD board members present unanimously approve, a hundred percent approve, to contribute to this endeavor, with two members abstaining because they are represented from the city council or city. So I'm pleased to announce, I think it was in Jim's numbers, but the VCDC has awarded fifty thousand back to the city council for this, and we believe it in wholeheartedly that this should go forward. Many other communities have this type of anomaly, and we're lacking. And therefore, as said previous, others may go elsewhere versus come to Vermillion. So again, on behalf of VCDC Board, we support this a hundred percent at Cotton Park and to go move forward with your construction contract.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Are there any other visitors to be heard on this? Okay.
Seeing none, I'll move to council for discussion now, so just want to remind council that, currently, right now, on the table is also, it's the, we're looking at the construction agreement with Mammoth Sports is what we're, uh, voting on today. So I just want to remind that. So I know there's some comments about location, stuff like that, that was already voted on. Also, I know there's some comments about the, the pickleball itself and things like that, but this is what we're, we're voting on. I'm not saying we can't have that discussion, but this is what we're voting on today. So just as a reminder of that.
So any comments from the, the council, or any questions or concerns? Councilor Helwig?
Thank you. I want to make, um, a few points, um, some of which I made last time, so, but I'm going to make them very succinct, because I want to summarize them again, especially as we have a, a very nice audience here today, which I appreciate. Um, so, the reason I wanted to speak is because, um, I was one of the first people, I think, who started looking at this, as I was alerted by one of our residents, um, about the loss of our pickleball courts. I just went back to review my emails. That was in April of twenty-two, which somehow is three years ago now. Um, and so when I was first alerted about this, I started working with staff to come up with a plan to look at, well, where can we put these pickleball courts now that we've lost several of these recreation opportunities? And I want to say that we first actually identified the Jolly site. Um, and we did quickly and quietly move away from that idea, um, in favor of the housing that we're now planning to put in, um, to keep the courts in a pre-existing recreational area. Um, and so that was one of our prime motivations for moving it there already. We have examined several locations, uh, both from staff and some, um, that private parties have brought up to us. Um, but again, those sites are not owned by the city, which would make them more expensive. Um, and there are also some proposals that were brought to us, um, that actually were more heavily residential areas, um, but they were high-density, um, zoned areas as opposed to, um, the R1 districts, um, that we're speaking of, or that some of our residents say we're speaking of. Um, and so I do want to ask a question, and this was to Mr. Merrigan's point, um, because I had this question as well, is how many noise complaints have we currently received regarding pickleball from the high school neighborhood? Um, and it's my understanding that that number is fairly low, if not zero. Um, and the neighbors who I've spoken with in that area, some of, some of them actually said, I didn't even know that we had pickleball courts right here, um, because I've never heard them. Um, and ultimately, like you said, we're here to talk about the basic construction. That's the issue at hand, and I do strongly support it for the reasons I mentioned. Um, but I'm not opposed to having further discussion on the park regulations, but I do want to, again, say that that's not what the issue is here, and it's something that, um, you know, we empower our Parks Department to enact those. Um, and of course, we already know, as someone said, you know, we don't play constantly. You mentioned, uh, the seasons, but also the, the time of day. Um, and our quiet hours are eleven PM until seven AM, and I don't expect you all to be playing pickleball at one o'clock in the morning, um, especially without lights. Um, and so I do take the question, um, very seriously about our representation, and whom does this benefit, and are lives improved? And I think so. Um, because I don't play pickleball court, pickleball, but, um, I want to live in a town that's lively and where people enjoy the many activities and amenities that the city might offer. Um, and I think that's important to live in a neighborhood and in an area and in a town that offers all kinds of things, whether we go to them or not. And I know I say this to Catherine often, I love that you have all these concerts and things and, uh, cultural events. I probably won't go in them, but I want to live in a town that has that kind of stuff. Um, and so, um, that's the reason why I would support this, and I think that summarizes some of the three-year history of this, uh, topic. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Helwig. She did have a question in there. Does Parker Record John want to respond to that question, reference how many complaints?
I'm not aware of any that we've received with regard to the pickleball courts at the high school.
I can't speak for the police department, but, uh, my office or the recreation department has not received any, um, concerns or complaints about that.
All right, thank you. Any other council members with comments? Councilor Lieber?
Yeah, I, talking with Jim, I, when I read the, the soils report, a little concerned. The, the engineers gave three options. The two options, option one and two, were very, very similar, and I feel very comfortable that the engineers are comfortable that that soil is, once they stabilize it, we find. The second thing I was wanting to be sure of is that the pickleball courts should be fairly stable, there should not be cracks in it, and the Mammoth, the, they're using post-tension concrete, which is, um, supposed to memorize all that, and I feel very comfortable after talking with Jim that they're on the right track by using post-tension concrete. So.
Thank you, Councilor Lieber. Any other comments? Councilor Jenna Wayne?
I had one question about the, um, the proposal from Mammoth. I lost my tab. Okay. Uh, I know that we've talked about the barrier, um, and I don't know if this question is for Jose or if this is for Jim, but, um, I don't see it listed anywhere on the documentation here, the sound barrier that would go around the perimeter. I don't think Jim heard me.
I'm sorry. I have another question.
Um, yeah, so I am looking, and I'm not finding anywhere in this document, documentation anything about the sound barrier that was, um, talked about, has been talked about for the sound mitigation that would go around the perimeter or be by the houses. Is that, um, vegetation only, or what, am I missing it?
No. Uh, I think we mentioned the environmental factors we could. There's some, some fast-growing trees, um, the bushes we talked about, an actual, a physical berm as well, are some of the environmental ones. Um, they also have windscreen or a noise reduction wrap that you could put around the court. With that, that does limit airflow, and sometimes it could get hot down there, so there's kind of a, a two-way street to look at that one. So that's another option that we could look at, um, as well as noise reduction balls. I think what, uh, what our recreation director, Tyler, who's in the off, audience here, um, with us, the many, many conversations that we've had with other parks and recreation departments throughout the state, um, in multiple states, in fact, um, have had very little concerns with this. Some of the larger metro areas that are heavily populated, I think Denver was mentioned, um, and, and there is some concerns when it's that close. But I guess we've looked at other communities where their pickleball courts are located here, and really, they haven't had the concerns. I'm not saying there's zero. Uh, please don't take it that I am. But I think the, the, the concerns are so few, and the noise complaints are so low, um, that it's not really a concern. Um, we're hoping with the mitig, with the measures that we put in place, if necessary, I don't want to go all in before we actually need to do so, but I think it's worth investigating, um, some options, if it is natural, environmental, physical, whatever it may be, to lessen any impact in that area.
Follow-up? Go ahead.
Yeah, one more question. Um, I don't know anything about the, um, the concrete that's used. Is, is that noise absorbing at all? Actually, I have one other comment to make also, um, but...
The concrete? No. That's...
I know concrete in general is not, but this is the material I've...
It'll be a concrete, and then there's going to be a surfacing over it, as you see most pickleball courts or tennis courts have kind of a asphaltian-type covering, which does reduce the noise a little bit, but not very much. Um, it's just more for consistency of play. The concrete and the process that's used for the concrete, um, be it post-tension, is, it's more expensive upfront. Um, I believe it's like a one-point-two-five more percent more, larger, I guess, cost upfront for that post-tension concrete, but the longevity of that is, is tenfold compared to just doing an asphalt one. That's where you go to some of the other communities and you see the tennis courts that have cracks throughout them all over. Those aren't post-tensioned. The post-tensioned ones are going to have a, I think what they're saying is about a twenty-five-year life expectancy right now without cracks. So that's what we're hoping for.
Okay. Um, I guess my only other thing was about the balls that have been mentioned. Um, I, policing that would be pretty much impossible, so I think that's going to have to be like a word-of-mouth, hey, these are awesome to work with, kind of thing. I guess it's more of a comment to the public. I, I, I think it's worth spreading the news and sharing that there is an option that would be good for players, but, um, that would be difficult to police, I think.
Thank you, Councilor Jenna Wayne. Councilor Haller?
Yeah, we got a couple of emails sent to us today, and I don't want to take everybody's time and read them, but is it possible just to put those into the record, whether we just slide them in the minutes? Um, the one from Jesse Daw and Jason Hollick, just so we can put those in with the record. Um, Jason's basically summarizes just a little bit of the, uh, the background of the pickleball, and he hopes to have some competitions to bring some revenue and stuff to town, so I think it would help with the revenue part. And Jesse, in her email, she just goes into the health benefits and, um, she probably knows, she's one of the, uh, she's in the South Dakota Tennis Hall of Fame, USD's women's tennis coach for a while, and so I'd just like those entered in the record or whatever we can do to get those on the record.
We can kind of summarize the comments like you had there, uh, Mr. Haller, and then we can go back to the packet that's online and insert their full emails into that.
That'd be great.
Just to clarify, has everyone on the council received the emails? I think they came out today from, from citizens. Anybody not get it? I'll, I'll make sure that by then you guys see that and we'll get it forwarded to you if you didn't get it at all. Okay. Is there any other, Councilor Murrah?
Hey, I'm going to go a completely different direction with my question. My question is going to be for probably Jose and Jim. Um, I have some local contractors that are talking to me, and they want to know how we could go to bid, have a bid without letting a bid, and they want the Sourcewell bidding process explained to them better, so they can understand how we got to where we are. Does that make sense? So, eeny, meeny, miny, moe, whichever one you want to do.
Jose, can you help me with that one a little bit? Um, I know council's familiar with Sourcewell. It's the same premise of that, but maybe you can describe it a little bit clearer for
I'll be honest with you, I'm not exactly sure how the Equalis process works. Uh, I know that we are allowed to use them. I know that they, it's essentially a design-build process. Uh, the university uses something similar sometimes. I believe the, uh, the county courthouses or the jail is essentially being built to the same premise. Uh, we do have the ability, uh, to hire a, a designer, and this designer also has a construction company, and that's how that works. They're providing everything from cradle to grave, if you may. Uh, so that's, that's how that process works. As far as the local contractors, in this instance, it does not have to be bid, because the designer's also going to be doing the construction. Uh, that doesn't mean that some aspects of the project may not be done by local contractors, but that's something that the city would have to, uh, be discussing with them, or making sure that some of the materials maybe are, uh, acquired locally, gravel, uh, rocks, if they're going to be using something of that sort. Uh, but I'm pretty certain that, that we can do this. We have, we actually checked with the city attorney before we even dreamt about using Equalis or Mammoth or whoever it may be. Uh, so we, we did our homework as far as that's concerned.
Do you have a follow-up, or?
I do, but he just left.
Okay. Well, he's thinking, is there any other comments from the council? Yes, Councilor Price?
Um, I just want to thank everybody for coming out. This is what public meetings are for, so we can get public comment from people and hear what they think about things. So thank you very much for being here. Um, I just want to be clear that I, I don't personally oppose this project. I think, I think the city, um, departments do a great job looking for the best, um, situations for their resources and what we can afford, and I think they do a great job at that. But I am going to be a dissenting voice in this vote and vote no on this, just because I want to represent the constituents of my ward who clearly have a strong opinion about this in opposition, or that some of them do, and they have been very vocal. So I would like to represent their voice in this and vote no on this, but, I mean, I'm pretty sure it's going to pass, and I'm sorry.
Thank you, Councilor Price. Councilor Murrah? Do you remember now?
Uh, I just wanted to say, I have spoken to, uh, some people that live right north of where that cart, park is going to be there, and they voiced zero concern about it being there. And I actually drove down there and stopped and looked, and it's like, it's almost a fifty, sixty feet away from the nearest house where the north edge of it would be roughly, right? Pretty close?
Probably further.
Right, yeah, further. That's kind of what I thought, too. So, um, he had no concerns over the noise. His main concern, and then you guys can verify this, and by the Geotech studies, too, was what's underneath the ground there, because he worked for the city when that was filled in, and he's worried about the stability of it. He would hate for us to see, to put something in there and have it go bad after a while, you know, in five, ten years. So I might want to explain that a little more to some of the people that maybe just tuned in or maybe are concerned about that, too.
Uh, I could try and answer the best of my ability, well before I was here, but, uh, my understanding of that was an area that some, uh, old concrete was dumped, um, lime is down there as well. Uh, I know there was some concerns about, uh, um, an irrigation system that was talked about putting, put in for the soccer complex, but they had concerns about that, so they didn't even try. Um, that's one of the large reasons why we went for, one of the reasons why we went with the Geotech for the soil investigation. I don't think at any site, um, you're going to have guarantees that there's not going to be anything underneath there that could cause concerns. Um, I will say that the foundations for the, uh, court complex doesn't run deep. Um, I think for council members that were involved with it here, um, we did run into some problems with the pool. Now, the old pool, but the old, old pool, that was still there, um, that wasn't found in soil testing because it was so deep. I don't think you're going to get down that, that depth, is what you're looking at here. Um, there's not a foundation, we don't have a basement in there and such. So there is going to have to be some soil work done. So can I guarantee what's underneath there? I know I've heard the same stories, too. Um, that's why we're happy with what the findings of the soil test came up with. Was it perfect as far as the whole entire area, they do? Uh, Jose, what, nine borings, probably?
Yeah, they did, uh, nine, nine, yeah.
Nine borings, so, I mean, it was a sizable amount down there. Nine borings. So, I mean, it was a sizable amount down there. They may have missed it, maybe not, but at least we tried to do our research.
Thank you, Jim. Councilor...
I just, I'm done with my questions. I just wanted to say, I'm going to be voting for this, because, and I've said it before, too, we've worked on this now for, in-depth since July of last year. Cotton Park, in my opinion, is the best place for it. It's going to be, from the pictures, it looks like it. I don't play pickleball, mainly because I don't play pickleball. But it looks like a beautiful facility, and it'll be a great addition to the, to the city. So that's my vote.
Councilor Lieber?
Yeah, earlier I was concerned about the soils also. I had some construction things done when I was superintendent, and this type of soil, it does get unstable. And that's why I've talked with Jim several times. But I got part of this, part of their report here with me, and it says that, in their opinion, a significant layer of granular material with fabric will be needed in order to stabilize and uniform the grade. We recommend a subsurface drainage system be provided for the courts, and this should be connected to a suitable means of drainage or discharge. The drainage system should be installed ahead of subgrade preparations to assist in lowering any groundwater if it gets encountered. On option two, if they're going to excavate 18 inches down, they will put a geofabric, geofabric over that. There'll be 12 inches of granular subgrade and six inches of non-frost drainage fill. And then they'll put the subsurface drainage in. They said with this option, they expect there'll be less than an inch of movement at all, less than an inch. And with the post-tension concrete, that whole slab should move at once with that, with the coils in the soil. There shouldn't be any, there shouldn't be any cracks. So I was concerned at first, after reading the soils report, because of Jim and the contractor, I, I'm hopeful that that's going to be a very stable soil, so.
Thank you, Councilor Lieber. Any comments from council members? Can I speak? Thank you. The only comments, and I'm not going to discuss on the location, because we did vote on that already earlier in the year and discussed that. I think one of the comments or questions I do have, and I think it's an interesting thing that we want to mention, and we have the VCDC that has pledged $50,000. So, thank you, Mr. Peterson, the VCDC that. We received a grant from the Tennis Association for $15,000, $5,000 from the Dakota Hospital Foundation here in Vermillion. And then also, this is more importantly, and I wanted to mention this, I know we mentioned Dave Hertz and Amy Hertz, but that, that donation is not just from them. That was a event that they had citizens in the community donate, raise money, donate items for door prizes and auction and stuff like that. And they raised, you know, I'm just going to round about $10,000 on that. And John, you've been here long enough. When was the last time the citizens of our community raised funds for a project like this?
Off the top of my head, the one that comes to mind was the Prentice Park Playground, and that was about 2006 or '07. There was a fairly significant fundraiser for the playground structure that we have there today. The Rotary Club raised some money. Some came from the club. They did some fundraising for what is now Rotary Park. That's probably five years old, I'm guessing. From a park standpoint, off the top of my head, those are the only ones I can come up with. Jim, can you think of any other? I mean, there have been, like when we built this Prentice Plunge, we had some, some contributions then, but not nearly to that dollar level.
Thank you, John. I guess the only other thing that I want to make mention, too, is, and I think this is key for every, every community that you go to, whether you're visiting as a, as a visitor or as a, as a citizen, you know, you take notice of your, of your citizens that are outside utilizing the amenities the community has, whether it's running on, on bike trails, hiking trails, which unfortunately, we've kind of had some hurdles with there. So, but also not only that, utilizing things like tennis courts, pickleball courts, baseball fields, things like that. And I kind of grow proud on seeing our citizens utilize our park space. And one of the things I've noticed with Cotton Park, especially since soccer vacated that, that field, we haven't seen much use of Cotton Park, other than, and I understand that the bike path that was being utilized. But that parking lot has been, I believe, fairly, fairly vacant. You only see a couple cars parked there. So I think seeing citizens utilize a park once again on something like that. I know we had citizens come out and spoke highly about a park nearby them and wanting to maintain that park and keep it there when we were talking about lotting that out for residential. And I think very similar to this as well, our citizens really like the use of parks and those amenities. So in reference to the, the construction build and the way Mammoth has designed it, I really like it aesthetically. It's very pleasing. I like how that's going to utilize the, the amenities already in place, like the restrooms and the parking lot. I also noticed that obviously our big concern here is pickleball, so we have that. But, you know, more so, the concern about noise is referenced to pickleball. And I see here that that's kind of put more towards the interior side of Cotton Park, which is kind of more away from some of the residents that we're talking about. They're having some concerns. So ultimately, to the east, you have the tennis courts, which will probably be utilized less than the pickleball. You have the vacant, or the spectator space, and then you have the pickleball. So we're, we're not only having a nice aesthetic-pleasing appearance, but also even putting it a little bit further in towards Cotton Park away from those residences. And Jim, from my understanding, nobody, none of those adjacent landowners have expressed any concerns about...
I have not received, I sent the 18 letters out. I have not received any comments or questions or any return letters from that. So, no.
Thank you. So those are my comments. Does that spur off any more comments? There's a motion by Councilor Helwig and a second by Councilor Taylor, or Haller? Well, sorry. It's a long day. Any other comments? Motion approves. signify by saying aye, opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on, our next item is a resolution to amend electric vehicle charging station rate. Everybody, you guys can hang out and watch us the rest of this if you want. Just give it one second here, Jack, okay? All right, Jack, go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, so this is the resolution amending fees for the Level 3 electric vehicle charging station. The city of Vermillion does have two EV charging stations. They look extremely similar. One, right out front here, City Hall, and then the other one out on Princeton Street and Highway 50, right next to Casey's. Although they do look very similar, they are different from each other. The one out here in the City Hall parking lot is a Level 2 charging station. I mean, among staff, we kind of call it a trickle charger. It takes longer to charge roughly, based on the data we've collected, three hours-ish. And then the one out by Casey's on Princeton Street, that's more of a surge charger, roughly a 30-minute charge time. So the resolution today is amending the Princeton Street rates. So with that, we have discussed with Missouri River Energy Services representatives and the resolution that is in front of you today, effective immediately, that would go to $13 per hour or $3.25 per quarter hour. And the reason we do quarter hours is, like I said, some of those are 30-minute charges. So it's broken out in that way. At this rate, the city still remains to lose roughly $4,000 per year in electricity. However, as staff, we do see this as a service that we provide to citizens of Vermillion. Along with the resolution, on May 1, the rate will increase to $16 per hour or $4 per quarter hour, and then on July 1, moving to $19 per hour or $4.75 per quarter hour. The reason behind this would be a gradual increase over time, so it's not such a bump right away, as well as on July 1, when it would be $19 per hour, that's kind of when the city is peaking in power demand. And when this Level 3 EV charger does come online, it is a surge to the system. It's a bit of a shock to the system as well, which Missouri River, you know, that kind of spikes the cost of power as well. So the city of council did adopt a resolution on June 17, '24 to amend electricity rates effective in '25, so that these changes would also go along with that. Administration recommends approval, and I am open for any questions.
Thank you, Jack. Any visitors to be heard on this? Council for discussion? Councilor Hallen?
Couple of things. Our proposed fees we're talking about...
Mike.
The fees we're talking about, have we compared to other cities? Are we comparable to everybody else, or?
So this would still be cheaper than many amongst South Dakota. Level 3 charging stations specifically, I've looked throughout the state, and many are $20 for the first hour, and then one hour, or, sorry, $1 per hour after that. And because of that, it's a surge charger. So as soon as that contact is made and that power is drawn, that's when the charge hits. So it's not necessarily a spread-out time. It's as soon as those 66 KWs that what it, what it charges at. It's an immediate, basically, cost to the, to the provider. So with the data that I do have here, I think John has sent it out to the city council as well, but the, the average charge time is 30 to 40 minutes, so.
What do we, what do we charge now?
$9 per hour.
$9. I, I can't understand why we'd go to $13 an hour and lose money. I think we should jump right to the next level to start with. I can't, I mean, yes, we like, like to be nice people, but if we're already under the rest of the cities, why, why encourage a cost on to us? If, if we did that, we'd still be in line with the rest of the cities. Is that correct, basically?
If we went straight up to 19, you're saying?
Not 19, well, one increment, not both, not jump over to the top. What was it?
Yeah, we would, yeah, yeah. We would still be right in line up. Like I said, they're at $20 for the first hour, and then a dollar additional per hour after that. So, I mean, if somebody stayed plugged in for three hours, it might, it would be more expensive than getting a tank of gas. But, I mean, as this shows, people are staying plugged in for 30 to 40 minutes. So. And that's the intent of the charger as well, you know, for like transient people coming through, get a quick charge on your car, and then continue on your way, I think, as well, so.
How long does it take to, I don't have an electric vehicle, sorry. How long does it take to fill your tank on an electric vehicle, on average?
I would say 35 minutes. Quick, quick answer. This...
So even a full hour, if we're talking, Rich is talking about it, $16?
Correct. $19.
I can't fill a tank of gas for $16 anywhere.
Correct. But if it was, I'm saying if they stayed plugged in for like three hours, it was 19 per hour, then it'd be...
But if it only takes an hour to fill roughly from E to full?
Correct.
You're still looking at a...
$19.
Comments?
Two, two questions. One, does it not turn off when it reaches the full charge? I mean, so I have a plug-in hybrid at home, and it is 12 years old. So it's the, the Level 1, super slow, has to charge overnight, and I get 14 miles out of it. So it's fairly worth it.
Especially the winter, right?
But sometimes we forget to get gas. So do the newer ones not shut off? Or does it keep charging as long as it's plugged in, or do you not know?
It is really interesting to watch. So I have a dashboard to kind of, like, that shows me like how much power is being drawn at one time across the city for these stations. And, I mean, they're pretty smart, right? Like, so if you're, if you plug it in at 70%, it's not going to wrap up so hard and hit your battery with that much power at once. And then as it gets closer to the 100% charge, it starts backing off. So I would assume that, you know, it stops at 100%. But I also have the 850 line Excel spreadsheet of all the charges in a year, and nobody ever charges to that 100%. I don't know why, but they're always like 97, 90, you know, and then 90 somewhere.
Might be like the temperature, the air temperature can affect that. The other question I have is, is there a reason we aren't charging what, like the kilowatt hour?
Take us home. I think we got that answer.
Like, why aren't we charging what the kilowatt hour is? You know, looking at my utility bill, I, we have a set rate for residential. Why aren't we charging that?
So we, it's, it's a bit of a flex billing situation. So the consumer walks up to the station, they tap their ChargePoint card, credit card, whatever it may be. The, that money goes to ChargePoint. ChargePoint sends us a check. And on the ChargePoint website, we're able to charge per hour, which then breaks it down to a quarter hour. So we don't have the ability to charge per kilowatt hour, or kilowatt, I guess. So it's all hourly-based, and that's what the resolution reflects, just so it's consistent on the website for a staff as well as the user.
Councilor Haller?
But we do know what somewhat of a break-even point is, don't we?
Yes.
Why don't we just charge the break-even points? I know we're trying to do a service here, and...
Nobody would charge.
You don't, nobody would charge for a break-even?
My opinion is that nobody would charge their car at a break-even point.
What would be a kilowatt hour break-even?
So our utilities manager estimated that on January 1, somebody plugs their vehicle in, the city automatically loses $900, just because the way that it's established, as soon as that 66 watt hits right away. And then over the month, the rates that are collected through that ChargePoint station, that kind of gap is minimized. And so, like, for example, in January of '24, there was 22 charges. So if you take 900 divided by 22, that would be the rate of the average charge.
But in your write-up, it says we lost about $4,000 on this.
For you, sorry, for electric alone. So if this was like a small commercial, for example, I think that's what is on, small commercial, like if you were a small commercial utility customer, there's the surcharge and then all, you know, to, to supply the system, or the backbone of the system, I guess, the infrastructure.
Any other questions, comments? Councilor Price?
I know one of the, one of the things we thought that might be happening by putting these in is that people charging their car and then like going and making a purchase, right? Going to the, going to Casey's, going to Walmart, making, spending some money. Do we have any anecdotal evidence that that's, do we know that's happening? Or do people just sit in their cars and charge? I don't know how people do that.
Yeah, so that's a good question. So I would say as staff, we see vehicles out in the parking lot here for extended periods of time, just because it is that trickle charger. We hope that people are walking Main Street or checking things out, maybe buying something. Out there, being that they are 35-minute charges, I, you know, hopefully they're walking over Casey's. That's why we, that's why I have an opinion that it, it's more of a transient service, people coming through town, or if somebody that lives in the city of Vermillion is popping out there to put a charge on their car quick and then going home.
I'm okay with the tiered approach that the staff is recommending, and I would move approval.
Motion approved on the table for what is recommended on, on the resolution. Okay? Is there a second on that?
Second.
There's a second. Hold off for more comments, too, because I just want to make an add-on to your comment. I commonly see, yeah, the one here downtown is, it's usually left overnight, so I assume it's probably somebody that lives in the area. And then the ones over by Casey's and Walmart, commonly when I see it, I would concur with what Jack had stated. It appears to be people traveling through. Usually I see them in the car, playing on their phone. So that's usually what I see with that, at least when I take notice. The other, the one question I do have is, with, with the lost revenue that we have with these, how is it that businesses, we see like Hy-Vee and things like that, have these? And obviously, they must be making a profit somehow, or else why would they have them? How, how are, how are they keeping them and doing them if, if they're losing money? How, how are, how are they keeping them and doing them if, if they're losing money?
It's a great question. I don't, you know, I'm assuming, I've assumed that they also use the same grant, same grant program that the city used initially to offset the cost of insulation, purchase, all those things. After that, I'm not really sure.
Okay. Counselor Jenowine?
I just want to make a quick comment about the difference between this charger and the one out there is the, this is level one and two, I think. And so like my car, I can charge here, but I can't charge it out there because that's level three. So you're probably seeing newer cars that would charge faster. Like, so there is also a difference in the amount of downtime that is required between the two vehicles or the two chargers.
Thank you. Any other comments? Counselor Murrah?
There's so much I wish I could say, but.
The mic is yours.
I don't understand. I always, I like simple math and by simple math, I mean even numbers. So why, why, why three-twenty-five, why four-seventy-five? Why not just four, five, six and be done with it? You know what I mean? I mean, we're still lower. We're never going to recoup the money from these things. You know, I think I figured it up when that one went out by Casey's out there. It was going to take almost three thousand cars to charge, to even get the money back that we didn't get covered on the grant that was put in for it, if I remember right. That's been a while. I don't remember the numbers right off the top of my head. So it just, to me, none of it makes sense. But that was my first comment when I saw the numbers or thought, I was like, why don't we just even number it and make it? I mean, we're still lower than the, than the average. And as far as people using the one by Casey's there, I have been at Casey's and I've seen people pull up, plug in and walk in and go to Casey's. I have seen that, so. Yeah, so I mean, they're not all just sitting there. I mean, majority of the time I see them, they're just sitting in there. And I don't mean they didn't walk in before I saw them, but I have witnessed people going in and out of there. So we are getting something out of it anyways, but that's just my opinion. You guys take the numbers, do whatever you want, but I like even numbers, even math. It's easier for me to figure out, so that's my opinion.
I think to your point, in the past two years, I've learned more about EV chargers than I ever thought I had. And I think that as staff, we didn't really know what to expect either. But it's nice now with two years of history of usage of both chargers to kind of go back and reflect like what, what needs to be done to kind of better this service on both ends, consumer and the city as well. So that's, so I appreciate that suggestion. Gary first.
Counselor Cheeseman?
So thank you. So we're kind of on the front end of the whole electric car thing. And I'm assuming that it's going to continuously get more and more use as we go. I kind of like the notion of a tiered system here too. It seems to make a lot of sense. And I too have seen people go into Casey's. I saw somebody walking across from Walmart one day, so I guess that's a big spender.
That's not my bags they were carrying.
So, but I, I think it's good too that our community supports this. I mean, I mean, this is our future, right? Gas isn't going to last forever. And it, it kind of shows that maybe Vermillion cares. And to give people at least a small break on that, I think is a, is a pretty good idea. A pretty good PR move for the city, I think.
Counselor Holland?
Yeah, Jack, the way you, oh, the way you broke it down, can you actually put in three dollars and twenty-five cents and get a quarter of an hour? Or do you have to put in a full hour or something like that? When they bring up plug-in?
Yeah.
Is it credit card? Is that what it is?
Yeah, it's all card-based.
So the longer you sit there, the more it runs up. But you can pull it out in fifteen minutes and pay three dollars and twenty-five cents?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any comments? There's a motion on the table to approve the resolution at hand. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Motion carries. Next item, be a resolution to authorize the purchase of a backhoe for the water department. Jose?
Thank you. So budget sessions in twenty-twenty-four, the city council reviewed the twenty-twenty-five equipment replacement fund. As part of that process, staff presented the option to replace a water department's twenty-eighteen case five-ninety SN backhoe. Staff proposes utilizing source well bid awarded to Caterpillar, Caterpillar for the purchase of a new Caterpillar four-twenty XC POW backhoe with new attachments. The cost for this equipment, including the attachments, is one-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand, seven-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars and sixteen cents. The attachments included in the quote, as you can see, are for a pallet fork, three buckets of different sizes and a snowplow. Additionally, they have offered to take the city's current backhoe and attachments for a trade-in value of fifty-eight thousand and fifty dollars. The net trade-in value would bring the cost of the equipment down to a hundred-and-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty-one dollars and sixteen cents. The local dealer for Caterpillar, Butler Cat from Sioux Falls, has, has told us that they will honor the source well bid. The twenty-twenty-five equipment replacement fund includes a hundred-and-fourteen thousand dollars for the purchase of a new backhoe. The proposed cost of the backhoe and the attachments is a hundred-and-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty-one dollars and sixteen cents. Based on the total, the city would save approximately fifty-two hundred dollars. The savings would remain in the fund and be utilized for other purchases. Administration recommends approving the resolution to purchase a new Caterpillar four-twenty XC POW with attachments from Butler Cat Sioux Falls, South Dakota for a hundred-and-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty-one dollars and sixteen cents. This includes trading in the city's two-thousand-and-eighteen case five-ninety SN backhoe and attachments.
Thank you, Jose. Any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, move to counsel for discussion. I have one question. How long does it take to fill this one up?
It'll look quicker than three hours.
Is there a motion? Motion by Counsel Murrah, second by Counsel Leiber. Your discussion? All in favor, say aye. Post say nay. Motion carries. Next item, be a resolution to purchase motor grader for the street department.
Thank you. So again, part of the equipment replacement fund, the council considered on twenty-twenty-four. This time, we're going to be replacing the street department's two-thousand-and-four Caterpillar one-forty-H motor grader. Staff is proposing again utilizing source well bid awarded to Caterpillar for the purchase of a new Caterpillar one-fifty Joy dash BR motor grader. The cost for this new equipment is four-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars and twelve cents. Although Caterpillar has offered the city to trade in our existing motor grader for a price of sixty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, staff believes that selling the equipment through an online auction would generate additional funds. The local dealer for Caterpillar, again, Butler Cat from Sioux Falls, will honor the source well bid of four-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars and twelve cents. The equipment replacement fund includes half a million dollars for the purchase of the new motor grader. Since the proposed motor grader will be less than half a million dollars, the savings of a little bit over seventy-five thousand dollars will remain in the fund and be utilized in other purchases. Administration recommends approving the resolution to purchase a new Caterpillar one-fifty Joy dash BR motor grader from Butler Cat for four-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars and twelve cents.
Much quicker than three hours again, if you're going to ask me how long it takes to fill.
No. Any visitors to be heard? Counsel for discussion? Motion approved by Counsel Murrah, second by Counsel Hallow. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Post say nay. Motion carries. Next, thank you, Jose. Next item, be a resolution to approve the issuance of a sales tax. Revenue bonds for TIF nine.
Thank you. Both of these two items are very, they're related to each other. We presented the TIF plan for number nine, which is the Jack Paul edition. From the beginning, we had always anticipated needing some outside funding. Just to recall, we have a South Dakota Development Authority grant for part of the infrastructure. We have a loan for part of the infrastructure. You approved using a half a million dollars worth of second penny funding. And then we have an interdepartmental loan from Light and Power to this fund. Putting all those pieces together, we always anticipated from the start that we're going to need to borrow some money. But we weren't quite sure what that amount would be depending on the costs that were involved and the amount of the interest rate related to those, as well as the actual construction costs. So to get the project to this point, we have used our, our grants and our lower cost borrowed funds. The South Dakota Development Authority loan, for example, is a two percent interest rate. And now that we've gotten closer and we have better numbers on all this, there still is a need to borrow some funding. And we've worked with our three local banks here, First Dakota, First Bank and Trust and Core Trust. And basically what we're looking at is issuing seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars of sales, excuse me, of tax increment revenue bonds for district number nine. It'd be split evenly amongst those three banks. The loan proceeds would be paid back using the lot sale proceeds, as well as the property taxes that are generated within that TIF district. So before you, this evening is the first step in this process and that's a resolution approving the issuance of the sales, issuance of the tax increment revenue bonds for district number nine. Meyer Henry Sergeant is the bond counsel kind of in this area who works with a lot of these. They've reviewed all these documents. We've traded messages. If there are any changes to the final version, we'll, we'll get those to you, but we believe that they're correct based on the messages that we've traded. This is very similar to what we did with Bliss Point one and two. We had tax revenue bonds for each one of those respective TIF districts. There we had the three banks plus two foundations. They were much larger amounts, one-point-nine million and one-point-six million, if I remember correctly. This is seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand, so we're just working with the three banks in this part of it. We would recommend approval of the resolution to issue the sale of tax increment revenue bonds for TIF district number nine. At a later future meeting, you might recall that the banks have provided a couple of different interest options that you can evaluate and look at. That'll be another item that you'll have in a future agenda. But basically they're looking at a five-year, seven-year treasury bill plus a margin on that, if I remember correctly off the top of my head. But that's a decision for a later date. Tonight's decision is if you want to move forward with a resolution to sell the tax increment revenue bonds for TIF district number nine in an amount not to exceed seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
Thank you, Johnny. Visitors be heard? Seeing none, move to counsel for discussion.
So this is to, this is just the, the go-ahead to sell the seven-fifty, but we don't know what the interest rate or the margin is going to be, we're going to get for it?
Yeah, so we will get, you will be making that decision at a future council meeting between now. This is a process that the council needs to approve this. We need to have it published and have those twenty days lapse. So during that timeframe, we'll be bringing that decision back to you with regard to which option you'd like to select.
Are we stuck choosing one of the options? What if they all suck?
Then we, I guess the third option is to decline or pass.
Okay, so that is, that is still on the table?
Right, so yes, adopting this, this is just allowing the process to move forward, but it doesn't mean that you have to accept the terms that are presented.
Okay.
Good. Counselor Holland?
Two questions. First of all, in the statement for the resolution, it says the bonds may take the form of a developer's agreement. What does that mean?
I might look to Mr. Jesse on that particular line. The bonds may take the form of a developer's agreement. I would interpret that to be that we are pledging or agreeing that we're going to be developing infrastructure, which in this case you've already awarded a contract for that and it's in process. From a legal standpoint, is there more to that wording that you would say that sentence offers?
No, I, again, this is.
Mike? This is going to be funding the infrastructure, as you said, so I, I don't think it's, it, this, this purpose of this resolution is to authorize that and to move forward saying we are going to authorize the issuance of those bonds at a late rate to be determined in a later time. And yeah, this, again, this is a pretty common process that sometimes the developers will go and get the money. In this particular case, the city's doing the infrastructure upfront, so.
This doesn't mean the developer is a tax, the money has to be used regardless. It says the developer is agreeing. It sounds to me like we're giving you seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Now tell us what you're going to do with it.
They're giving us the money.
Yeah, we are the.
So we're the developer.
Right.
So it's not really.
Yeah.
Okay?
The only thing that we don't know is what it's going to cost us for that. The, the cost of money, yeah.
The next question I have is, is a hundred and ten, tax measures? I've read it several times. Are these exempt or not exempt?
I believe they would probably be tax exempt. I'll look to, because we are a tax exempt entity purchasing these. But that is one of the questions that I'm trading messages with Meyer Henry Sergeant. May, poke chop, I think it may not say mag, may, poke chop, to clarify that language to make sure that. I anticipate that question, but we've not gotten a complete answer on that one.
Yeah, yeah, I would agree. I think the bonds that as a municipal governmental entity, if you're doing it, is, is going to be for IRS purposes, tax exempt, so.
Which would make it more enticing.
Sure, yeah, if you want to have that kind of investment, that's right.
I've read it several times. That could be whether it's, we want it to be exempt, that doesn't mean it is. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, is there a motion? Motion approved by Counsel Murrah, and a second by Counsel Holland. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Post say nay. Motion carries. Next item, be a resolution declaring the official intent to reimburse the expenditures for TIF nine project costs.
So if I were to sum this up in about a, I don't know, twenty-word sentence, it basically allows for the funding that we might be borrowing to be used to pay for items that are purchased within sixty days before we receive the money. It's kind of the layman's terms of what all that means is that basically you can begin to incur cost that will be coming, that'll be paid back with the money that you're going to be receiving. It's a statement that they, a resolution that they have declaring your official intent to use money which you do not yet have in hand, but will to pay that back when it comes in.
Shake all the street versions.
And if there's fancier legal terms, but yeah.
It's like an IOU. Any visitors be heard? Counsel?
Once again, confused. What, this resolution is just simply saying we're going to do what we're simply going to do? And a temporary advance means that we're going to give it back?
I'm sorry, that we're going to give it back?
The word temporary advance is there. Does that mean we're going to give it back?
I think some of this word.
If we have interest payments, if we have interest payments before the TIF starts accruing taxes for us, then we can, we can pay back ourselves for paying the interest.
Sure.
Does that make sense?
No, but thank you.
So if you have, correct me if I'm wrong, Katie. So for example, you have the money for the TIF that's going to go to the project. If we start paying out of bucket A, start paying towards the interest, well, bucket A isn't, isn't earmarked for that, the TIF is, but now the TIF can pay back that bucket A and make it whole again, correct?
Yep.
Does that make sense? Okay.
We're, we're borrowing from yourself. Okay, thank you.
Okay, learn something new every day. Any discussion on this? Is there a motion? Motion to approve by Counsel Leiber is a second. Second by Counsel Cheeseman. Any other discussion? All, all in favor, say aye. Post say nay. Motion carries. Next item, we have a bid openings. We'll go into Jolly School asbestos abatement. Jose?
Thank you. So late twenty-twenty-four, the city acquired the former Jolly Elementary School from the Vermillion School District. Intent of the city has always been to raise the school building to prepare the area for construction of single-family homes in the area and a park. Racing of the school building is going to be split into two different projects. The first project is asbestos abatement, which is what the council is considering today, the contract for that. After the asbestos is removed, the second project would be for racing the school building, parking lot, playground, and the playground. And that item, that project would be awarded at a later time. The city sent plans and specifications to nine plant houses and nine contractors. Out of those sent, the city received seven bids for the bid opening on January twenty-ninth. The bids range from forty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars to eighty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty dollars. The tax increment financing, our TIF number eight project plan included demolition of the current building. That's one of the, that's one of those items funded activities. Asbestos removal is one component of the demolition, as I already explained. The work will be paid through the TIF districts number eight. Staff recommends that the project be awarded to the low bid, which was Prairie Environmental Consulting out of Sioux Falls for a total of forty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars.
Thank you, Jose. Any visitors to be heard? Counsel for discussion? Counsel Cheeseman?
So why the large differentiation in the cost? We go from eighty-eight to forty-nine. What's, what's, what's going on there?
I have a feeling that some of the items are going to be related to mobilization. We, on our bid, we didn't ask him to break down as far as mo was concerned. So you have the, the low bid is actually coming out of Sioux Falls, where the remaining contractors are either coming out of Des Moines. One of them is coming out of Norfolk, and the furthest one would be coming out of Rapid City, which was the highest cost, I guess. So I have a feeling it's some mobilization, and, you know, they might pay their employees differently as well. So there's some cost variety, I guess, based on the, each individual contractor.
So I have friends that live in that area, they're kind of concerned about the removal of that asbestos, so. I guess I don't know what the question is, but I'm really hoping that, you know, a lot of concern is put into the removal of that. They're terrified, one of them is anyway.
Sure.
So.
Well, the asbestos is going to be removed, right now it's not friable, so it's not out in the air or anything of that sort. It's actually concentrated either within the, the window glazing of the nineteen fifties building, which is pretty much everything that faces west. And then also within the building, particularly within the pipe, some pipe insulation and some pipe fittings. So everything is very located, it's, it's very, you know, in, within the tunnels and so forth. And the way that the contractor, at least some of them, were explaining that where they were going to do it, is that they were actually going to be placing plastic in some of these areas, and the demolition was going to be done within that enclosed space. And if anything was, dust was going to be generated, whatever was going to be contained within that, black of the term, bagged area. So the, the items that are going to be friable or out in the, everywhere are going to be nil, hopefully, that's the intent, so. Yep.
Counsel Leiber?
Well, I'm, I'm pleasantly surprised at the price. Because it sounds like from what you're saying is they'll not be coming in with big hazmat suits, which scares the neighbors when they come in with all, drawn up, because it seems like as long as it's wet and not friable, they don't, they have to wear masks, but I don't think they have to.
I'm not saying that they're not going to wear that. I'm just saying that that's what, that's what was explained to me. I'm sure that they have to do their own little thing for their company.
Right, but I wouldn't expect, from what you're relaying, the things in the tunnel can be wet and down and taken off the.
Yeah, and everything.
Wet and then taken off.
Yep, if they're going to be removing a fitting, they're going to bag that and then remove it, and, yep.
There's not going to be much dust, thank you.
No, yeah.
Any other comments? Is there a motion? Motion to approve by Counsel Price, is there a second? Second by Counsel Hallow, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay.
Thank you.
Motion carries, thank you. Next bid opening be Fuel Quots.
Thank you. So we received three bids for Fuel Quots this month. Item number one, the low bid was for, with New Century FS at two dollars sixty-six nine. For items, the average of items two A and B FS, or New Century FS one with two eighty-five nine. And then the average of ninety-three was also with New Century FS three thirteen nine.
Thank you, Katie, visitors to be heard. Council for comments or motions?
To approve of the low bids.
Motion to approve the low bid by Counsel Price. Second by Counsel Toller, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Motion carries. City Mayor's report, John?
A couple of meetings coming up before your next meeting. Human Relations Commission will be meeting this Thursday, February sixth, at five thirty PM in the Murrira Conference Room here at City Hall. And then the City's Historic Preservation Commission has a meeting on Wednesday, February twelfth, in the Powell Conference Room at nine AM. Reminder that Kitter Street, from the west line and the intersection with Court Street, west to the alley between Court and Market Street, is going to be closed, I forgot to put the dates, Saturday, February fifteenth, from eight AM to four PM for the South Dakota Special Olympics Polar Plunge. Our city offices are closed on Monday, February seventeenth, for the President's Day holiday. So your next city council meetings are on Tuesday, February eighteenth. Just a reminder, the evening meeting is actually going to begin with a joint meeting with the Clay County Commission at six PM. That's to consider the second reading of the ordinance to rezone the property approximately one fourth, one-fourth mile north of city limits on the west side of Highway nineteen. That'll be the second reading of that ordinance, and then once that's, joint meeting with the county is completed, then you'll have your regular city council meeting that will follow that. And then included in your packet was one raffle notification, Vermillion After Prom, they're selling up to five hundred raffle tickets at a dollar each. Three for ten dollars or seven for twenty dollars, and the prize is four P R C A pro rodeo tickets and a parking pass for the event at the Sioux City Event Center. And you can choose whether it's February fourteenth or February fifteenth you'd like to go to it. Total value is approximately two hundred dollars, and the drawing will be held on February eleventh, and the proceeds will help support the Vermillion after-prom and post-prom events, activities, prizes and food. That's all that I have.
Thank you, John. Next item we have is invoices, payables. Everybody had a chance to review the bills? If so, are there any questions or is there a motion? Counsel Price?
Katie, can you explain in number thirty-eight, this reimbursement for cash drawer for Greg, does that mean?
So his cash, cash drawer crashed on us, so he had to purchase a new one, and to get it faster, he purchased it with a credit card. And so we are just reimbursing him for that.
Got it, thanks.
That's also your rent, so it's rent and the cash drawer.
Probably should have labeled it, yeah.
Yeah.
So how much was, do you know how much the cash drawer was itself, though?
Like eighty-five hundred.
Okay, that's, that's still quite a bit.
How much is in it?
Did it come with the cash in it? Is that why?
Came with the bowl.
Right, no kidding.
Any other discussion?
Movie player bills.
Motion to pay a bill by Counsel Price, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Toll, Counselor Toller, I have an issues today with your name, I don't know why. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Motion carries. There's no consensus agendas, there are motion to adjourn. Motion by Counsel Murra, second by Counsel Leiber, all in favor, say aye. Post say nay. Meeting adjourned.